Commissioner Billingsley?
Here.
Commissioner Bone? Commissioner Childress?
Here.
Commissioner Hall? Commissioner Headley?
Here.
Commissioner Perkins?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here, and we have a quorum. And Commissioner Bone is still trying to pass a kidney stone. I talked to him just before I came in. But before we start our meeting, I'm going to ask our...
Chaplin.
Chaplin. Boom, I'm looking at pastor on this card. Horace Winters, he's the pastor at UAE... UAME Methods Church in Burbina. So if he will come forward, he'll lead our invocation. Then I'll ask Commissioner Childress, feel the leaders in our pledge.
Sure.
Let us pray. Dear Father, we become now at this appointed place at this appointed time. Father, we just want to say thank you. We thank you for this day and all this many blessings. We thank you, God, for this opportunity as we acknowledge you before these meetings, Lord God, as we acknowledge you as the head of our lives. Father, we thank you most of all for sending your one and only Son, Jesus, to die so that we may have life and have life more abundantly. And God would give you honor, we give you glory, and we give you praise. Now, God, we come now, we ask that you bless this meeting, bless the leaders of this county, Lord God, bless all these people that's within the sound of my voice. And we ask you, God, that as this agenda go forward today, we ask that you bless it according to your will and your way. And Father, we'll give you glory, we'll give you honor, we'll give you praise. And God, when this meeting is over, Lord God, we ask that you just give us all traveling grace to our various destinations and our homes and allow us to make it to our homes, Lord God, and find them the same as we left them. Father, we thank you, we praise you. For us in mighty and nice name of Jesus the Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Attention?
Salute.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm going to ask, just like that just happened, everybody silence your phones. Put them on airplane mode. We had a considerable amount of static because we had a meeting last night. As I got quite a few texts, couldn't hear anything, so everybody please do so. Okay, we've had a roll call, a public hearing for Dollar General. Yes, ma'am. Any motion to open?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Perkins, second by Commissioner Childress. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Now, I'll open the public hearing. If anyone here to speak for or against? If not, do I hear a motion clear to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Commissioner Perkins.
I second that.
Second, Commissioner Childress. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Approval of the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
Move Commissioner Childress, second Commissioner Perkins. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, sir. I think there's a deletion on nine... Nine, B, C, and D. Nine, B, C, and D. We will bring that up at the next meeting.
Those were on the consent agenda, just already... I thought they were already removed.
The B, C, D?
B, C, and D.
B, C, and D.
All right.
It's a motion.
Any other discussion?
We have a second.
Yeah. Yeah. We have a motion and a second.
If we could also add this resolution authorizing the retention of counsel pending litigation?
I so move.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Childress, second Commissioner Perkins, to add the resolution presented by our attorney. And let's put that right under staff reports. All right, all in favor? Let everybody know, raise your hand. Any opposed? And all in favor of the agenda as amended, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Okay. Have no public comments, no organizational reports. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion, Commissioner Childress, second Commissioner Perkins. And the consent agenda consists of the minutes October 4th, 2025, claims list October 28th, 2025. Resolution to approve reclassification under the Sheriff's Department for Domingo Ayala, Rebecca Cox, to approve surplus of vehicles and bull bars and listed on attachments and utilizing gov deals to sell. Resolution to accept a school violence prevention program grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Policing Services. Resolution to accept a cops hiring program grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Policing Services, and Chilton County Commission Chair and Administrator to sign under probate. Resolution to approve proclamation recognizing A.G. Brothers Funeral Home for 50 years of service to our community. Under Revenue Commission, resolution to approve wage adjustments as on the attachment. Commission Office, resolution to approve add-in progress addition, resolution to approve 2026 severe weather preparedness tax holiday, February 20 through 22nd. Resolution to approve fiscal year 2025 reappraisal carryover. Resolution to approve payment to shred it for approximately $1,000 to shred old documents from the courthouse. Resolution to approve invoices for CDBG water improvement project and Chairman to sign. Resolution to approve correction to pay increases for Tiffany Eastling and Tabitha Sizmore. Board of Registrar, resolution to approve wage adjustments for Pam Kelly, Donna Cox, and Hunter Staggs. Under Transit, resolution to approve recommendation from the interviewing panel for Transit Director effective October 29th. Resolution to hire one full-time transit operator and one part-time transit operator. Under Road Department, resolution to approve a construction agreement for Project ER-9081 for the tornado debris removal. And that is the end of the consent agenda.
We have a... We have a E.
Oh, I'm sorry. Resolution for approval to apply for fiscal year Atrip two grant to improve the intersection of Alabama Highway 191 and County Route 50. Thank you, Commissioner Childress. All right, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
Chairman, we didn't invite to allow them to continue with their process for their alcohol license.
Thank you. All right, now we'll back up to the public with Dollar General. Do I have a motion to allow them to proceed with the process to obtain their alcohol license?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Motion, Commissioner Perkins.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Childress. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed?
I abstain.
Four, four, and one abstention, and it passes. Thank you, Makisha. Okay, brings us down to staff reports. Commission Office, Ms. Sylvia.
I'll be asking for a resolution to open nominations for the Chilton-Clanton Public Library Board. Currently, they are asking that Paula Mitchell be reappointed.
All right, do I have a motion to open nominations for Chilton-Clanton Public Library Board?
I so move.
Motion, Commissioner Childress, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Perkins. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
I move we nominate, or I nominate Paula Mitchell for the Chilton-Clanton Public Library Board.
All right, that's a nomination by Commissioner Childress. Any other nominations at this time? Okay, we'll move to the next item.
Let the record show Commissioner Hall.
No, I'll hear.
The record show that Commissioner Hall has... is here.
Next, I would like to ask for a resolution to open nominations for the Department of Human Resources Board.
Do I have a motion to open nominations for the DHR Board?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Commissioner Perkins.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Childress. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
They are asking to nominate Stanley Varner to replace Ludeen Hicks.
I nominate Stanley Varner.
All right, Commissioner Childress nominate Stanley Varner. Are there any other nominations? Okay, then both of these will be held open for two more meetings, and we'll make an appointment. All right?
The next is to ask for a resolution to approve a disposition of excess funds arising from a tax sale pursuant to Section 40-10-28 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, and this is for the Camacho documents that were listed earlier.
All right, do I have a motion to approve resolution for the disposition of excess funds?
So move.
Move, Commissioner Childress.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Perkins. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
The... I had mentioned that there were three... possibility of three of those to come up. One of them has to do with the retention of counsel if our attorney, Ben Goldman, will address that.
Certainly. You have before your resolution that would authorize the retention of counsel in pending litigation. It is the case Jeremy Smith versus the state of Luther-Keckler. At all, the county commission and the revenue commissioner were named as defendants in this action. It... This is apparently another... Another case in a... In a series of cases between those parties, but we have been brought into this one. Tomorrow, the county administrator is going to check with our insurer about the potential for appointment of counsel, but there will be an answer due before this body meets again. And so to make sure that you have representation, I am recommending the adoption of this resolution.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing retention of counsel in pending litigation?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Commissioner Perkins.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Childress. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. All right?
And then just as an item to follow up on that third one, we did send a letter today on the third... On the third property to the attorney who had made the application, and it followed up on a call that I had with him. That one is not due to be paid, and we've laid out the reasons for it, and a copy of that letter's been sent to the chairman and the county administrator.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay. We're going to do the commission reports now. Commissioner Billingsley?
No, sir.
Commissioner Bone is not here tonight. Commissioner Childress?
I'll forego the animal control. I'll do that in the state of the county address, but resolution before you to approve a letter of support for the proposed Atrip project in Thorsby for the Chilton County School Board, Chilton County Board of Education. I put that in form of a motion.
I have a motion to approve a letter of support for proposed Atrip project in Thorsby for the Chilton County BOE, second by Commissioner Perkins. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
And if you would, Commissioner, stay and sign that document. I'll need to return that to the superintendent ASAP.
Okay, that'd be the last one we signed tonight.
I got somebody to help that with that.
Okay, Commissioner Hall?
No.
All right, Commissioner Headley?
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I want to ask for a resolution to allow recon reconstruction to install lighting to the playground at Manuka Park at no charge to the county, pending verification of proper documentation. That's in form of a motion.
All right, motion, Commissioner Perkins, to allow recon construction to install lighting to the playground at Manuka Park at no charge.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Childress. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. I also have a resolution for the commission to approve the petty cash policy from the Manuka Park Elementary School.
Okay, do you... That's a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Motion, Commissioner Perkins, second.
Second.
Commissioner Childress?
Fell asleep.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. You know the routine, you and him with the...
I mean, I was concentrating on the hundred dollars.
Okay, anything else?
That's all, thank you.
All right, can I have a resolution to approve Thompson tractor invoices?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Commissioner Perkins, second.
Second.
Commissioner Hall? Any discussions? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We have five, four, one abstention, and it passes. Okay. Something new. I don't recall this ever having been done, and it was requested. Commissioner Perkins brought it to me, and several different citizens wanted to know the state of the county. So tonight, we're going to have the state of the county, going to do it a little bit different than what you see the state of Alabama and the state of the nation doing. One year ago, my fellow commissioners honored me by electing me as chairman. I was taught Parliament procedure by James Pierce, who was the ag teacher and FFA sponsor at Isabella High School. His philosophy was that the chairman of any organization was to be a moderator, a mediator, and a facilitator. With that in mind, I asked each of my fellow commissioners to select from the list of commissioner responsibilities what they'd most like to do and what they were interested in. And there were some, I think, 14 different ones, and I only had to appoint one. They each selected the things they liked and were interested in doing, and I think when you hear their reports tonight, you will know why. And with that, I'm going to start with Commissioner Billingsley.
Thank you. First of all, I'm going to... Doesn't seem like it's been a year, almost been a year since we were sworn in, and I have... I've really enjoyed it. I've had some ups and some big downs this year, but I'm still here. And tonight, I'm going to be reporting on three. I'm going to be reporting about 911, EMA, and Sheriff's Office. Two of these I'm liaison on, and then one I'm on the board of. So, and I'll start with the 911. These I'll be reading directly from what the head of the departments have given me because after reading them and much thought going into it and consideration, they can write it better than I can. So I'm going to cheat, give them the, I guess, the honor that they need for writing these and the job that they're doing. They're all doing a great job, and when I read through some of this, you probably going to be amazed, as I am, as I was, of what's actually taken place in the year of '24 and this year already. So I'm pleased to provide an update with the current status of the Chilton 911. The team continues to operate effectively despite some ongoing challenges. Currently, we are down one employee, and a lot of times, we're down one employee, sometimes two, but mostly one, but then it's... Most... Most of the time, it's a full staff. And, you know, this was... Has impacted some of the aspects of the operation. However, the morale remains overall good, and among our... There's 16 dedicated employees there on that floor. I mean, that's a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week. And if it doesn't get shut down by the end of Christmas, it runs through. There's a floor supervisor active. It floats throughout each shift, and they uphold expectations and maintain a high level of service quality. The dispatch center handles between 400 to 600 events daily. Now, that's daily. So you can average out at 500, multiply it by 365, that's how many phone calls they get a year on there. I didn't do the math on it, but the 400 to 600 was enough for me. And this is a role they play is in public safety and emergency responses. That means they cover the Sheriff's Department, the law enforcement. That covers all the law enforcement in the county and some of the state, and the first responders, the firemen, the indiamants is here. So, now, there is also the 911 handles new addresses for people that want a new address. And now, this is an average, and I did not realize this until yesterday, they're averaging five per day requests for new addresses. Now, some of those may be commercial, but it's going to be a very few. The rest of it's going to be residential. That tells me that the county is growing with people, homes, or something for people to be requesting at least five per day for new addresses. Looking ahead, next year, we've... They're trying to keep their pay... They charge the municipalities and the county sheriff and the commissioners for their transmitting when they send someone out. They have actually been able, I think I'm correct on this, to hold that cost the same for the last two years, and they would like to try to do that the same. Well, it is going to be for '25, '26 because we'd unpass the budget on there. So they... They're doing... They're getting ready to make their move to the new courthouse, which is going to be, we think, in March, to be ready in full staff and full operation in April there. They... I think they've already had a meeting as of yesterday, are looking at their rooms and where they're going to put things. We have new P... When I say we, I'm talking about the 911, new P-25 consoles. We decided not to put them in here, even though they're ready, because the move is so shortly away to go to the new courthouse, we're going to wait and install them at one time. That's going to save money by if we had put them in here, we'd have to pay for it, and then we'd have to pay to have them moved out. That's done by... I call them Motorola. They have two or three names. But those new consoles, and they get this effective, and we get the new P-25, the other two towers up, and then structures. The P-25 radio is a radio that's, I'm going to say, I think it's nationwide. What that means is we have our law enforcements, our firemen, anyone has P-25 in their apparatus or even a handheld, and they get called. To give you an example, a year, two, maybe three, I don't know, time passes by, construction crew hit a gas line in Helena, and it blew up and caught fire. Were you realizing, now, that Chilton County sent, I don't know how many tankers up there with water to help them? Had a problem. Nobody up there was on our frequencies and our radio, so we could not talk to each other. With the P-25 system, you'll be able to switch over to a channel and be able to talk to whoever it is that has P-25 system, where it's Shelby County, Jefferson County, Tellam, Birmingham. There are other counties in the states that's in the process of doing the infrastructure on the P-25 also. So they... They're doing a good job there. They were loaded with the calls. I mean, when you think of how many calls they get in a day, that phone's never shutting up. It's ringing at all times. Now, I'm going to move into the EMA and give a little report on it. Over the past year, this agency has continued to strengthen preparedness, response, and recover capability across the county. In the spring, our emergency operations center was fully activated in response to the tornado outbreak that impacted our region. Through coordination with our first responders, public safety partners, and the state agencies, we were able to manage resources effectively and support local jurisdictions during that official time, a critical time, I'm sorry. They are proud to report that several key accomplishments this year. Chilton County EMA successfully secured multiple grants, including funding through the CRI and EMPG programs, as well as... And RC and D grant, all of which have directly enhanced our government preparedness and response operations. We also completed technology upgrades in the training classroom. If you not know it, the building out on Airport Road, which we call the EMA building, is also used and shared with the Sheriff's Department with his detectives and investigators out there, and they have a nice, big, I'm going to say, state-of-the-art classroom, can seat several people, has screens, they can teach classes with first response of the sheriffs, deputies, or wherever. It's even offered to the... Excuse me, volunteer firefighters. They can go out and be trained there, too. That's... Major Moston was the completion of our new storage and equipment facility. They have two or three trailers. One of them is a new trailer that was just... It was bought through a grant. It was ordered last year and came in this year. Am I correct, Sheriff? Did it come this year or in last year? Was it last year? And time goes by. Anyways, it's full of staff now with radios, P-25, VHF, and it's mobile, being a trailer, and it is a command center, which that means if we have a disaster, a tornado, or anything disaster, they can move that trailer there and be able to communicate with the first responders, the law enforcement, ever who's on the scene there. That one... Oh, let's see. And this EMA staff continue to oversee the local emergency planning committee and the county-state committee promoting coordination and compliances across this agency. They do a lot more than what we give them credit for or what we know for. They work behind the scenes on a lot of things. They are... They're called out, such as when we have a tornado, to evaluate the tornado, to figure out or try to putting on it if it's an F-1, F-2, F-3. So, and that's... We have, I believe, two full-time EMA and a part-time. So there's an EMA that's on-call 24/7 in this county, and the county is covered. They have their own... Not their own vehicles, but they have vehicles that's furnished for the county to them that carries the equipment they need. And if I'm not badly mistaken, I think all three of our EMA personnel are also paramedics. And they're... And I know they're EMTs, but I believe they're all three are paramedics. They're all three are medics. They also work with the Sheriff's Department. If they get a call, then they send a... Just went blank. Special Operation... I knew there was a new word for it. Special Operations Unit out. We used to call them SWAT. And they've all... Just about all the time they have a call, there's two medics there with them in case they do need them. So that's just a little short summary for the EMA. Now, the last one I have is Sheriff's Department. Sheriff's Department, with the help of our grant writer and Major Ken Harmon, have written some good grants and have been awarded some good grants. I might should say great grants on there. On these grant programs, in the last... The end of '24 and then this year, too, they have succeeded more than 1.13 million in grants for this county. Now, that's a lot of money and a lot of grant writing on there. And I'll give you just a short breakdown on it. The Skip Grant for law enforcement... The Skip Grant for Law Enforcement Training Simulator was two hundred forty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars. Uh, now this is a high-tech two that's helped in training. And Sheriff, you correct me if I get it wrong, because you and I just talked about this. There is one in West Virginia and Texas, and now there's one in Alabama. And as far as we know, that's the only three in the United States. Is that correct? Yes, and there, so they can, and what he explained to me is, you know, I thought it was on a big screen or something. No, is they put these goggles, you've seen some people using Playstation, they put these on and they can see what's going on. Uh, Tuberville appropriation for law enforcement vehicles, three hundred thousand. That's been awarded. That means new vehicles that sheriff can buy that's not coming out of the county's budget, our budget here. Oh, the JAG allocation is ten thousand fifteen dollars. The Violence Against Women Grant for twenty twenty-four, and the sheriff has a latest advocate of that, was forty-nine thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars and sixteen cents. And I assume this, uh, grant was renewed for twenty twenty-five for forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The Homeland Security Grant, uh, that is the command trailer that I was just speaking of early, that they got. It's a nice trailer. I don't know how long it is, but it's long and it's very nice. That was a hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollar grant. Uh, the cops hiring program for twenty-five was two hundred and fifty thousand. That allowed the sheriff to hire two officers, two new officers that's not coming out of the county's budget. Correct on that? Okay. Uh, the school violence prevention program for twenty-five, three D scanner, sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars. This is a piece of equipment or two that goes with the, the training. Someone will come in and they will set up, and it's a tripod, I have seen it used in construction. And they can take this room, they can put it in three corners, and it'll document everything in this room. Chair, mic, whatever's there. This can be used in their training, this can be used in the school in case something was to happen at a school, and they needed to go in. Uh, we got a Kwaka AED grant for, we actually got two, ten thousand dollars each. Uh, now, there is a scanner that is now in the jail. If someone comes in and they're trying to sneak something in the jail that's not supposed to be in there. I guess they walk through the scanner, they can walk through the scanner, and it don't matter where they put it. And I'm seeing, emphasizing where they put it, it will pick it up if they were trying to sneak something into the jail. That is up and in full operation now too. So, like I say, that is, uh, all that comes up to the one million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixteen cents. And I want to thank everyone that was involved with these grants, everyone that has done a program. I mean, it's not just the sheriff, it's his deputies, his investigators. Uh, gosh, the, the list just goes on and on, what they're doing. That's what we as Chilton County have accomplished within one year, or what they have accomplished. Let me give, let me rephrase that. That's what they have accomplished in one year. And I'm sure there's more, but this is just what they gave me. And like I said earlier, they can, they put it in writing, which I can understand. And I'm hoping most people can understand if you're watching this or listening to it. And hopefully in our twenty-five, twenty-six year is gonna be as good, if not better, than the twenty-four and twenty-five year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Billingsley. Commissioner Bone is not here tonight, Commissioner Childress.
Hmm, yes. Um, I am, uh, gonna give a little update on animal control, budget and county money, uh, the commission office and insurance. So, um, uh, the animal control, let me get a little closer. Animal control, the, uh, previous commission members voted to create and fund a department of animal control. But left it up to this, uh, commission to implement the plan. So we took over operations in January twenty twenty-five with a newly hired director having started on the sixth of January. Working closely with the director, Christina Bolick, we were able to properly staff the facility within about forty-five days. We were able to overcome many challenges during the first few months, I won't go into all those. Including reorganization of the shelters process, credentialing its staff and refurbishing the facility. We spent about eighty-eight thousand dollars refurbishing the facility and have set the place up to be used for a long period of time. We are looking to build a, a new shelter, uh, probably right next door on some property that, uh, was granted. Or was, uh, transferred to the county from the Humane Society. Christina's been able to build new relationships, including our law enforcement partners and municipalities, as well as several rescue organizations and companies. She's also, uh, secured several grants, uh, and, and reduced contracts and, uh, for instance, we have, all of our animals get Hill Science Diet Dog Food. Not only that, they, they, uh, they get a, the, the adopted animals are sent home with Hill Science Diet packages. And so this is to give them a, a good start, but, and it benefits us, it cuts our cost of dog food in, uh, in half, really. So, uh, this is, uh, this is allowed, all this has allowed Christina to, uh, manage the budget. And her staff to maximize safety for the citizens and humane care of each animal that enters our staff. Uh, sheriff can probably testify to this, this, this young lady and her team work sometimes eighty hours a week, trying to take care of these animals. The, uh, we have twenty-five dog runs in that old building. And there have been times when there have been two hundred and twenty dogs in that, in that facility. And, uh, each one of those have to be watered, have to be, uh, the shelter, the, uh, area that they're housed in has to be clean. They have to be walked, and it's seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So this is, uh, they've done yeoman's work down there. And on top of all that, she gets called out to support our law enforcement officers when they're out there trying to capture, uh, animals and, uh, and unfortunately, we've had some incidences where these animals have, uh, bitten, uh, some of our citizens. And she's called out on all those to try to get those animals, uh, secured and in our facility. Uh, budget and county money started a new, we started a new process this year for budget creation. We formed a budget committee, and I'd like to point out that, uh, that committee was, uh, our administrator Sylvia Singleton. Makisha Cleckley, Amanda, uh, Ackerman, uh, and it included, uh, Chair, uh, Chairman Williams, Chair, uh, Commissioner Perkins and myself. And the goal was to, uh, create a first draft. And, uh, in doing so, we were able to, uh, meet with each of these, uh, the heads of the departments. Understand their needs, and we were able to create a budget, or at least a first draft of a budget. That met their needs as well as the county's needs, and the county's needs is to stay within budget. So, we, uh, we, we plan to repeat, repeat this process moving forward as it was very successful. Uh, monies, let's talk about monies for a second. We have about eighteen and a half million in secured bonds. Most of these monies are definitely earmarked, so we don't have eighteen and a half million for y'all to spend. Uh, otherwise, uh, that are otherwise obligated, is that is a, uh, that is what a budget does. It tells every dollar where to go and when to go. Uh, debt, the county is in great shape in this area. We have roughly four hundred thousand left on a loan that was used for county roads. We have one point four million loan servicing lease agreement for our dump trucks. We have a nineteen million dollar bond loan, uh, serving, uh, servicing our new courthouse. Which is a thirty million dollar project, so ten thousand, I mean, ten million dollars was cash from, uh, this commission. And, uh, the offset was about, uh, twenty million in bond, a bond loan. Revenue, sales taxes are flattening, so, uh, this is gonna affect our cash flow. So we'll be, uh, we'll keep our eye especially on the general budget. Uh, we have it covered for now, but we'll be watching every dollar. Uh, simplified, simplified seller's use tax, otherwise, uh, the acronym is SSUT. Uh, in common world, we call that the internet tax. That remains strong and increasing. We, we increase about two hundred thousand, uh, annually in, in that SSU tax. Um, and so it remains strong, we increased again. Uh, I've heard of other counties SSU flattening as well, but ours has, uh, continued to grow. Um, we use that SSU to offset the loan of, of the new courthouse. So right now, um, our, uh, our courthouse is being built, as you can say, with, uh, SSU tax. Uh, let me say something about SSU. This commission, uh, brought notice to our citizens that there are municipalities in the, in the state. Uh, larger municipalities that are trying to, uh, get more, get their hands on more of the SSU tax. Uh, the first word in that is simplified. And if for some reason these, uh, municipalities are successful. They may create something that is not simplified, and these, uh, there's no federal law right now that they, that these companies have to remit this tax. So this is so simple, uh, the state of Alabama came up with something that's so simple. That it's the model being used by other, other states, many other states. And it's so simple that they can implement it into their software systems and track their sales and remit the revenue. This coming year, that right now there's a promotion going on, and this coming year, they'll probably have some type of legislation, uh, at the state level. And we just need to make sure that we keep our ear to the ground, and when that comes up, we need to be, uh, we need to talk with our state representatives. And our state senators to make sure that, uh, that counties are taken care of. Um, so that, just stay tuned on the SSU tax. Uh, the courthouse, we also have a courthouse, uh, committee, uh, chairman, the commissioner bone is the chair of that committee. I serve along with Commissioner Hedley on that. We're watching that courthouse. It was originally, uh, it, it's ahead of schedule. It, it was originally, we were to take occupancy, April twenty-seven, uh, twenty twenty-six. So, uh, it was like a fourteen-month project, but it's gonna be much sooner. So, uh, our departments need to be ready to box up stuff and, and be moving real quick. Um, the, we are, uh, planning a ceremony for an opening, a grand opening. But we're also, uh, in preliminary stages of planning memorial, uh, services out there as well. Uh, the commission office, Sylvia Singleton, Makisha Cleckley, Tiffany Thornton, Miranda Ackerman, Brittany Dejarnet, and our HR Director Terry Hinton run our commission office. These folks are fully credentialed and are diligent at their jobs. I tell you, uh, they're every, I've had the thought of us going to once a month meetings. I just don't see it happening. The business comes too fast and furious. We, uh, we really need to commend these people for keeping, uh, not just the commission on track, but the, the, the county government working. Uh, lots of money passes through their hands, and they know where every dollar is and, uh, and help to make sure that we don't overspend. And I, I do really appreciate what y'all do. Uh, we've got, uh, uh, one that's about to receive her masters up there. I think she's two courses away. We, uh, we have all that have completed the ACCA. Uh, and one that is also, uh, ACCA is the Association of County Governments, uh, and, uh, county commissions. And then the ACCMA is, uh, the county and municipal, uh, governments. And we have, uh, I think Makisha has that certification, so congratulations to that. So we have some, some qualified people that are helping us guide, uh, this money. So insurance and national flood insurance is also on the liaison for that. Basically, we're utilizing the ACCA and the CRS, which is the County Risk Services. These are programs through our organization that help us to, um, uh, gain, uh, a better deal on insurance. And so right now, this is what we're using and, and we're on top of it. These ladies stay on top of it. Uh, I wanna also, uh, talk about the ACCA. I wanna thank the taxpayer for allowing us to, uh, use these monies to be a part of that association. Um, these, this association trains us, and we have gone through, uh, hours and hours and hours of training. There, we have so many hours we have to complete within a two-year period of time. Uh, there's been three of us that, uh, of the four new commissioners that were able to do that already, that, this year, I think in about eight months. I know that we had one that would have been with us, but he was fighting some other battle at that time, and so glad to have him back. Uh, employee recruitment and retention, that's been a focus of ours. Uh, ongoing, this, this commission is looking, uh, for a way to make sure that we get the best people. And, uh, our pay versus the market is not as well, is not as good, but our benefits can offset that a lot. And, uh, the ability for our people to stay local working. Uh, one, one thing that we did, uh, recently, we have Blue Cross Blue Shield as our medical insurance. Uh, the employee themselves are fully covered, but we have moved from fifty percent coverage for family to seventy-five percent coverage for family. So we now have put the, uh, cookies on the lower shelf. Most any of our employees were able to come up with a couple of hundred dollars a month to cover their entire family. That puts a load on our, on our budget, and, uh, and so that's one of the things that we'll be, uh, we'll be watching. But we hope that this is gonna be a benefit to our employees, and we think that it will. Uh, our goal is to hire the right people and give them the best equipment. You've heard from one person about all the equipment that we're trying to, uh, make sure that the sheriff has. Uh, make sure that the road department has, make sure that the office has. We're about to move into a new courthouse, and it's gonna, it's gonna have new equipment over there, and it's gonna be fantastic. Uh, and we do all this and, and provide the training to help, help them succeed. And, uh, I, I, uh, that's my report. I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone wants to drill down into any of these and, uh, after the meeting or whatever, but I, I appreciate the time.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Childress. All right, Commissioner Hall.
Okay, good evening, and, um, I apologize for my tardiness, but it's one of those things, I guess transit. Trying to get from point A to point B in a timely manner without getting a speeding ticket. Okay, um, to all my Chilton County constituents, thank you all for entrusting me to serve as your county commissioner. Uh, upon taking this position, I sought to serve Chilton County to the best of my ability with the support of my peer commissioners, county personnel. And most of all, all the citizens of Chilton County. Well, initially, as you all know, like the state, I started out with the animal shelter. That was not a fit for me. Because of personal reasons, it was not a fit. And so I resigned from that position, and presently I am serving as a liaison for the transit. As well as, um, with plans to work with mental health. I'm grateful that, um, April Weaver has now take, will be taking on that national position. So I'm sure we will have some good representation for Chilton County to get the things that we need in that capacity of mental health. Um, now to allude to the state of the county pertaining to the Chilton County Transit. Uh, initially, the, uh, Chilton County Transit was being ran by Jessica Pemberton for thirteen-plus years. Serving as, uh, serving, uh, for, for the CCT. But she resigned from her position in July twenty twenty-five. As of August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five to presently, the CCT is being run by interim director and recommended, uh, recommended director Kianta Dejarnet. Uh, I tell you what, since Kianta has been in that position, he came in the door running, ready to work. Have to allude to the background of his grandmother, that's the first, she used to drive that transit bus everywhere. And so he was very familiar with some of the aspects of it. Um, since in position, Kianta has worked aggressively to become adequately staffed to meet the needs of the county. to meet the needs of the county for public and out-of-town transportation. Presently, you know, in Chilton County, we have dialysis facilities, many medical offices that require transportation as well as the local Walmart runs, Wendy runs. I found out people in Chilton County go to the Calaburn for transit. So we're glad to know that we offer many services as well as, Kianta has worked on a project for the holiday season. We will have more transportation for people to do their holiday shopping in and out of town as well as he's collaborating with the senior citizen facilities and other entities with the sheriff department and all to get transportation services that they need. So it is very, very busy i- in the transit. Presently, we have ten operational handicap-equipped units available for transport. As I said, collaborative efforts are being made to assist other, you know, people for transport. Aside from providing transportation, many efforts have been taken to obtain resources via grants and available state and federal support. Don't want to disclose what he's working on in motion because we got to make sure that he's in position as well as he also has created a position for a assistant director. Because Kianta has to drive the bus, round up the herd of employees. You have callouts. So we're increasing the number of staff members that are available to provide these services. Also, Kianta is working closely with the state to get fundings that we need and creating positions for proper reimbursement, so to speak, for funding. In addition to that, we also have planned on the relocation. Now, we will be moving from presently on, let's say Enterprise Road. Enterprise Road, we will be moving, relocating to the Tag Division, which Kianta, myself and the chair, we've gone and looked at the facility and plans are already in place for the remodel, also fitting ten buses in that area. I still can't get it, but they say it's going to work. So we will be parking ten units in those, those areas when we do re, we relocate. So transit, it, it is, it is very big and it's going to grow. Because in a Tag County where I work, buses are running. I mean, it's a, transportation is a lucrative business. So it's going to create revenue. So I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to really continue to work with Kianta, with his staff, and to get those things. Outside of that, he also has been working with advertisement. So you will see our buses eventually getting wrapped or people promoting their business. But on the flip side, they will be paying to advertise. So that's a great, great opportunity for us to, you know, get, obtain revenue. So that's all that I'm working on outside. I'm not going to jump into Joe's area, you know, roads. I get called on fifty thousand roads. I have no clue where they are. But I just want to thank all my peers for helping me out because really, my thing was to learn, to collaborate. It takes me a while, I have to see who I'm working with and to learn everybody's personalities. And we all, Chilton County, I can honestly say, we work together well. I can pick up a phone and call and ask this question, ask them to support me. And believe it or not, me and Alan Williams to the general public. We may have started over here, but I think we're here now. And so, but that's, that what makes a great team. And I appreciate that, his expertise as well as Joe Hedley. He's very quiet, but when he says something, I'm always listening because experience teaches us, teaches us a great lesson. Also, the sheriff works very well with me. Last night, I had an interesting experience, I won't go into that. But it's called networking because we want to be successful in Chilton County and move us forward. To have a great team makes a difference. We may not look all alike and be alike, but I tell you what, they have, I have, they have much respect for me and I want the county to know that. They do give me my respect as well as I respect them and I'm grateful and thankful for that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall. Commissioner Hedley.
All right, I'm going to be giving the Chilton County Engineering Department financial year twenty twenty five summary. An overview of maintenance of nine hundred and thirty-seven point seven miles of total roads, five hundred and sixty-two point four of paved roads, three hundred and seventy-five point three of gravel road and a hundred and one structures, fifty-five bridges, forty-six box covers, while completing ma- major improvements enhancing safety, infrastructure and services across Chilton County. This is, that's, that's a lot of roads for, for a crew of men to keep up. The, there's some ma- major projects was twenty-two point nine miles of reconstruction and resurfacing. County Road five twenty, County Road forty-three, County Road seven sixty-four, County Road six thirty-three, County Road ninety-five, County Road sixteen, County Road twenty-three and County Road forty-nine. Is, we have reconstructed and, and resurfaced a lot of those roads. I guess maybe all of those roads. And we got drainage and structural improvements. County Road two fifty-one, timber bridge decking replacement. County Road seven oh one, a seven-foot box covert replacement. County Road four eighty, dual four-foot covert replacements. County Road sixteen, box covert sky replacement. I guess maybe cleaning up and fixing some parts of it that needed to be fixed. Gravel road rehabilitation, County Road five twenty, County Road five fifteen, County Road two twenty-nine and County Road five twenty-eight. We done, they, I say we, that road department, they done some facility support, built pads and spread rock for the new MA buildings and the county P twenty-five tower sites, haul rock to the animal shelter, Manuka Park and Higgins Ferry between doing all this other stuff. So, you know, them, them boys, they, they really stay busy. Our engineer stays busy and, you know, you, you just can't say enough about how they work together out there and, and do a really good job. I'm, I've, I've seen a drastic difference in our roads since, in this last year, really. On the, the emergency operations, tornado debris removal on March fifteenth from, in Maplesville, southeast of Maplesville. They cleaned up a lot of debris over there. Grant fund, funding projects, County Road forty-nine, LRSI safety and guard rail. County Road twenty-three, rebuild Alabama, those three hundred fifty thousand dollars of rebuild Alabama money spent on that and we had to put a lot with it. But if you ain't been down twenty-three, you need to go down it. It's, it's a really nice road and it was much needed. And County Road sixteen, LRSI guard rail, four sites was redone on it. County Road fifty-four, it was LRSI guard rails and covert safety done on that one. Ongoing work in the fall, be on County Road thirty reconstruction, County Road fifteen to County Road thirty-seven, County Road one fifty-six and County Road one eighty-five and covert improvements. The department remains focused on efficiency, safety, long-term infrastructure improvement for the Chilton County residents. And like I said, I just would like to really applaud Heath. He's, he's done a good job leading them boys out there and keeping them busy. And they, and they've all done a good job. I mean, he, he, he ain't done it by himself. Nobody out there's done it by themselves. They do it as a group. I went out there and sit in the morning time before and everybody seems like they get along and do well and work well together. So, you know, I'm, I'm really glad to see that. I, I ain't seen that in a long time. And last but not least, the litter control lady. This nine hundred and thirty-seven point seven total miles of road, she keeps it cleaned up, Libby Ratley and her staff, they do a, a fantastic job of keeping stuff cleaned up. And I thank our, our judge, he, he puts some boys out on picking up garbage on side of the road. He, he does a good job at doing that and, and they do a good job. They pick up quite a bit of garbage. I guess that's better than them just sitting over in jail. So anyway, that's, that's everything that I got to do for tonight. Thank y'all, hope you have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Hedley. Commissioner Perkins.
Yes, sir, thank you. So I want to mirror what some of the other commissioners have said. I too appreciate the opportunity that was given by the citizens of this county to serve as your, one of your county commissioners. It's not a job that's taken lightly and we do a lot of serious work and we have fun doing it. I was over the Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development, Fire Department, Storm Childers and Parks Department, so y'all grab a seatbelt. In the Chamber of Commerce, this year in Chilton County has seen great growth and has welcomed over thirty-two new members during, so far during this twenty twenty-five year. We've been able to also coordinate with the Chamber on partnerships. That is, the commission offices and the departments has partnered with the Chamber in a partnership to promote not only new businesses that were here, but also enhance existing businesses and by promoting the park system using a rack card system. The rack cards were designed by the Chamber and promote visiting the county on one side of the card and our park system on the other side of the card. Soon, these cards will be actually delivered to all regional hotels, local businesses, and will be distributed through a partnership with the state of Alabama and placed into every rest area in the state. As you know, in economic development goes hand in hand along with the Chamber, the IDA, Airport Authority, and of course, this commission. And we've been very successful in adding new companies and expanding businesses that were, that were already mentioned. We also recruiting, the recruiting industry, new industry continues and hopefully we will have great opportunities to be announced in the future. It is imperative that we as a governing body of this county continue to improve relationships with all our city governments, all the city planners, to keep their growth strong. Our central location is poised for greatness in this county, in this state. And by focusing on the growth at the interstate exits, we are able to maintain a down-home field in our downtown areas while maintaining a rural field to the rural areas. Utilizing that model of growth will allow us to benefit from increased revenue at the interstates by artificially inflating our census numbers and pass those benefits on to the entire county. Also, under the name of economic development, we've been able to successfully recruit new and exciting events coming to the area with the potential of generating over two million dollars per year in increased revenue in this, in this structure. And I thank the county commission for backing those programs and having some foresight in, in what's to come. In the volunteer fire department areas, volunteer, our fire departments in twenty twenty-five so far, and these numbers are probably about a month behind. Just the volunteer fire departments have seen roughly almost five thousand calls. Those numbers are huge for a volunteer fire department system that in this county has so few volunteers. We are in desperate need of volunteers for our volunteer fire departments. And I'm hoping that we will see an increase interest again once the new tech center out there is up and running and will bring in a new generation to a volunteer fire department role. Those, those guys are well-trained. It is a thankless job, as Commissioner Billingsley will attest to, and they need, they need a lot of help. So I implore you to do what you can on that. As far as the Parks Department goes, our Parks Department was combined, all the parks have now been combined under one Chilton County Parks Department. Utilizing a Parks Director and the managers, we have been able to better utilize our staff and create a more fluid department. Thanks to the efforts of our director, Donald Giles, and his staff, we have seen a great increase in visitation to our parks. We have improved, we have improvement scheduled not only for Higgins Ferry and Manuka. But as for Manuka, we have already begun the habitat restoration on the lake along with scheduled stocking and fish management efforts. We also have finalized the purchase of the property that was begun by the prior commission that some of y'all, y'all were a part of. And those one hundred and sixty-one additional acres will soon be developed into more side-by-side trails and hiking trails that will make Manuka a, a wanted destination to come to our, to come to our county. Also, through a partnership with the road department, the widening project of the existing trails and a maintenance program has been begun, or is being started, I'm sorry. We've also been able to secure a Colawaco grant to build a community archery park there and it will provide even more opportunities for the citizens and the visitors. And finally, in Manuka, we have opened a general store and set the ribbon cutting for November the thirteenth at ten AM. Future goals the department, department has is to, not only just to have two parks in this county, but we would like to see that expanded. A few of the future product, projects that we have looked into is an overlooked mountain bike park off Highway twenty-two, an additional archery park in Maplesville and several other green spaces that will just generally improve the quality of life for our citizens. So having said that, I think that the, the state of those departments is good and I appreciate the time and the opportunity to give a rundown. And if anybody would need additional numbers or some stats for those, I'll be available to give those. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Perkins. As I said when we started this, I think you will see the enthusiasm of each one of these, of your commissioners. And each one of them, if you'll notice, they all said they were servants of the Pup People of the county. And I truly believe that each one of those take that to heart. They serve, they're, they're interested, they're enthusiastic in everything that they're involved in. And it makes the job of the chair a whole lot easier, except for getting my legs strapped occasionally because of somebody not getting the money like they're supposed to. But that's gotten a lot better and I do appreciate each, each one of these commissioners and what they've done. And hopefully next year, when we're in our new courthouse, the report will be even better than what you just heard. So I want to have a couple of remarks. Earlier on, I'd asked our administrator to send out a notification to all the department heads and elected officials in this courthouse to be prepared, and I think it was March first, to pack up and be ready to move. I think we're going to have to up that to about February the first to be ready, not to move, but be ready. So we've got a lot of stuff in this courthouse that needs to get packed up. So if you will, Miss Sylvia, I'll ask you to do that tomorrow. And I just now got a text that I'll have a quote in the morning. It's what it will cost us to move these marble engraved panels from upstairs into our new courthouse. And Commissioner Childers and I have looked, there is a wall that all eight panels will fit on. So hopefully we'll get a quote that we can live with and they can get them moved. And part of the old will be part of the new. Now, if all minds are satisfied, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion for Commissioner Childers, Second Commissioner Hall. All in favor, raise your hand. And everyone a good night.